All right, it's time to start. I call the meeting to order. Our first order of business would be to conduct roll call. Commissioner Sonna Gregory.
I'm present.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
Present.
Commissioner Gal Hambrick.
Present.
Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Madam Clerk, everyone's accounted for. Our next order of business will be the invocation. We'll have a moment of silent prayer. Be followed by the pledge of allegiance. If you would, everyone stand with me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Commissioners November 17th, 2020 meeting. Our first order of business would be adoption of the agenda. Do any members have any amendments?
Uh, yes. I would like to pull out Resolution 2020-231.
2020-231. Commissioner, when you say pull out, do you want to take it separately or do you just...
Correct, yep, that's correct, sir.
Okay, so we have a motion, Resolution 2020-231, Resolution authorizes Clayton County to enter into a contract with Georgia Power Company. Uh, the motion is to place it on the regular agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Warner. Those in favor, aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Are there any other...
Yes, Mr. Chair, please, um, also take item 11 separately, please.
Item 11. Okay, Resolution 2020-225, is that the correct one, Commissioner?
Um, read the title because it's hard to toggle between...
Resolution authorizes Clayton County to transition housing services into the community.
Yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, so you're wanting to take this separate?
Yes, sir.
All right, is there a second on the motion? Is there a second on the motion? All right, well, that motion does...
So since there's not a second on the motion, I want to make a point of privilege to make a comment. I believe that it's definitely something that is needed, but I also believe that we are duplicating services in various departments. And when we've got department leaders that may be working out their ability to handle certain things already, as I've stated before, I don't know that it's a good idea to add more to their plate. And, um, I believe that we have appointed a board to be able to do things such as this. And if we're going to take the time to appoint a board, then as board members, we should allow them to do their job. But I'm only one commissioner, and that's my statement.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other amendments, additions, deletions? All right, hearing none, I will accept the motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. I second the motion. Are there any questions? All right, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item of business is public comment. Citizens will be given three minutes, maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners with a total of 30 minutes. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks while addressing the board.
Atanya Jean Funny.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Atanya Jean Funny, unincorporated, Clayton County. Um, I'm here today to speak about what is going on in our community. And I don't come out very much because of what's going on, so this is really important. So I've had the privilege to be a science teacher for over 20 years in biology. And one of the things that I've always taught my students is that for viruses to survive, they need a host. They must have a host. So we have to do everything possible to not be that host for this virus so we can get back to our normal lives. And so on that, I have, um, been taking my personal time to make masks and ascertain masks for the community. Last month, I was able to give all of the library services five-day supply of masks. And I'm here today to give the same thing to community development. And I have also, for the commissioners and the chair, uh, the chair, made personal Georgia masks. And they are blue on the inside, so I want you all to have those. So I just wanted to do that. We must wear masks. They need to cover our nose and our mouth, okay? So that's my thing. We want to get back to our lives, and this is something we have to do for now. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. If you can leave them with, uh, Mr. Reed right there, we'll get them taken care of. And thank you so much for your contribution back into our community and all that you're doing. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Funny.
You're welcome.
Brenda Harrison.
Thank you. Brenda Harrison, unincorporated, Clayton County. Uh, Chairman and Commissioners, I'm here to say thank you. I'm standing in to represent the Board of Trustees for the Clayton County Library System, and we couldn't do it without you. I will be listing some of the things that, uh, some of the programs that your support has allowed us to provide for the citizens of Clayton County for free. Now, these things during COVID, we are open at the library, but there are a lot of things you can do from home on our website, And we'll start with the children and the teens. We have digital student cards. All the students in the Clayton County school system can have a library card. They'll just have to contact their school system and get one. We have on our website what's called Brain Fuse. It's for homework assistance, tutoring. If you have, um, an essay that you have to get done, you can send it to Brain Fuse. They will review it, critique it, and send it back to you. We have typing sites for teens to practice their quality typing skills. We have what's called a tumble book library. It features electronic bilingual and multicultural books. We also have programs for the hearing impaired and visually impaired. Now, for the adults, we have what's called Job Now, which is through Brain Fuse as well, to assist with job readiness and job searching. We have Grow with Google, Google small business courses. And you can register online or via the website. Now, we also have hotspots that you can check out. All you have to do is be a rep, show, uh, proof of residency for the county, uh, show photo ID, and you must be 18 years of age to receive the item. And these hotspots, you're able to keep them for up to 90 days. We also have Learning Express Library. It features skills, tutorials, practice exams, and U.S. citizenship courses. We also have, uh, Niche Academy, featuring a variety of continuing education courses such as the use of Facebook, job searching online, Microsoft Office Suite, and Growing with Google, teaching you how to, um, market your business and, and much, much more. Now, for all ages, the library provides Libby. Libby Overdrive is a new ebook for all ages that you can download from your computer.
Ms. Harrison, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
It is.
It is. Three minutes go by quick, doesn't it?
Oh, my!
But let me just say, I appreciate all that you and the trustees are doing for our library system. You're doing a great job. Please continue to do it wonderful.
Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Harrison, before you go, can you give that website again?
Absolutely.
I know some folks definitely want to write that down and use it.
Yes, it's claytonpl.org. And please visit the website. You would be amazed what's there for you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Michael Bryant.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Michael Bryant, unincorporated, Clayton County. I am here on behalf of the Housing Authority in two capacities. One, to talk about item number 11 on the agenda, but also to introduce our new executive director, Ms. Denise Ziegler. She's coming from the city of Atlanta and bring a great deal of experience and knowledge and grant writing and management experience that is going to be extremely useful and needed at the Housing Authority. So just want to have this opportunity to formally introduce you all to her, and, uh, thank you for that opportunity.
Anything you'd like to say, Ms. Ziegler?
Um, I'm looking for the pleasure of working with everybody here at Clayton County. And again, I bring a lot of knowledge and experience, not only with the city of Atlanta, but also with the city of Newark and New Jersey.
Okay, well, on behalf of this board and the citizens, we welcome you. Look forward to working with you.
Yeah, I met you a long time ago.
Yeah, you're familiar.
One of the most important things about Ms. Ziegler, she is a Clayton County resident. So a lot of her skills and expertise has been traveling up to the city of Atlanta to help build their authorities and their government. So we're honored and have that opportunity to allow her to use those skills and expertise here to build up Clayton County. So that's, that's got... Second item is item number 11 on the agenda. As echoing with, uh, Commissioner Franklin, I think it's in the best interest of the Housing Authority to be able to participate in these HUD, um, programs and grants and things of that nature. As you know, for the longest time, the Housing Authority has been suffering from, um, energetic, ambitious leadership, um, to say the least. And now we have an authority with the board, as well as an executive director, that have the energy, the expertise, and the ambition to, to provide services for the county. So I would like an opportunity to participate in conversations. Um, as you know, I've sent you an email several months ago requesting that we be a part of those conversations and have an opportunity to participate with any type of HUD programs that the county have. We have the policies and procedures. We have the structure. We have the, the staffing, um, and the expertise to provide these services and pull it off. So I just want fair consideration. Um, if not for this particular item on the agenda, certainly for future. Uh, we're not trying to step on any other agency's toes, but we do want to be partners in this community and make a valiant effort to increase and enhance the services that this county have. Thank you.
But let me say this. This board by no means plans to down, downplay the vital part or role that the Housing Authority plays. There will definitely be an active role for, uh, the Housing Authority to play with community development, because we need to work together.
Absolutely.
And I'm here to tell you that that will happen. So we just need to, like you said, sit down and delineate some roles and talk about some other opportunities in which the Housing Authority can play a role. But we look forward to making sure that happens.
So do I.
Thank you, sir.
Also, um, don't go anywhere. You live in District 3, come on back. Well, as you say, as you saw, I did try to pull that out. One of the things that I hear from a lot of folks is that many of our directors has, have a lot of duties on them and that are placed on them. And what I noticed with this item of number 11, we're actually even going to give a raise to the director when it's actually the staff that are going to be doing that additional work. Um, so I do agree with everyone, and I don't know that Mr. Chairman speaks for the entire board, but for me, I think that the county, as well as us as a Board of Commissioners, needs to take a hard look on whether we're moving forward or if we're constantly duplicating services. And Mr. Chairman, I remember in particular, there were certain folks that, you know, out of, um, out of, uh, respect that we went along with, but I think that we do ourselves a disservice when we take the time to put competent people on boards. And that's if we put competent people. And no offense to you, sir, I know you're good, but I know for a fact the person that I suggested for the board is extremely confident, competent. And I think we need to allow these boards to be able to work on behalf of the people as opposed to constantly, um, adding more work to our directors. I do want to give you a kudos as well, because I travel throughout the state of Georgia, and I'm always meeting those, including today, who are traveling outside of our county that have, that are subject matter experts in several areas that we really could use their talent in Clayton County. So I'm so happy that you were able to find one of our jewels and bring them back home. So thank you so very much. Kudos to you, uh, but especially to Joyce Little Lee. You know, I got to tell her, thank you. So I'm sorry we couldn't pull it off, and it puts me in a precarious situation. I wish that this board would have considered at least taking a separate vote, because if the, uh, actual thought of each board member is that it's the right thing to do, then why not vote on it? That's all I got to say.
All right, but let me assure you of one thing, Commissioner, and that is when we make this type of move, we being the staff that put this together with the department heads, we are considering all avenues. We are looking at the viability of doing so, of combining or moving people over. So it's just not done haphazardly. We're doing it in an effort to make sure that we are going to provide the best services that we can to the citizens of Clayton County, and it's something that we don't take lightly, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, but I do have to actually say this too. The one thing we have to be sure of is making sure that we hear both sides. I have a question for you, Mr. Michael Bryant. Have you met with this board or staff to even consider if you all were able to take on this effort? Have you heard from anyone, including our chairman, who's, um, under the section code to be able to speak?
Unfortunately, I have not. I've requested...
You have not spoken to me?
Well, I've spoken to you personally.
Well, that's me. I'm the chairman, whether I'm Jeff or not. And we have spoke on a number of occasions.
Right. Your, our conversation...
Don't get to it.
To, for full transparency, our conversation was positive. However, it lacks traction, because I've requested multiple times for us to have conversations with community development, economic development, and all these other agencies that help empower this community. That hasn't happened yet, and I'm looking, I'm still waiting and looking forward to that to happen. Um, I think there is opportunities that we're missing as a collective, and not to have divisions between one agency to the next. We're all one Clayton County, and I think we should work in that spirit. So, uh, we did have a conversation. However, that conversation lacks traction.
It wasn't to your liking.
It lacks traction.
At any rate, this isn't the time or place to debate this. We're going to move on, but thank you for your words, sir.
And Mr. Chairman, no disrespect, it's not about debate, but as policymakers, we don't get all the information, and that's why we put these work sessions in place. So the one thing I'm going to ask is that whenever we have something before this board, whether it's contradictory to the thoughts of one individual or not, that we need to have all parties present so that we can make an informed decision, an evidence-based decision. So whenever there are holes, we have to be left to guess, so. Thank you, and thank you for your efforts.
But we will move on. All right, next up is...
Ain't got to be rude, Mr. Chairman.
Rachel, Rachel Orchley? I might be saying that wrong?
Orley.
Orley, okay. Uh, and ma'am, I'm just going to say this for the audience. If you're here to speak about a zoning matter, that's a separate hearing outside of public comment. You are welcome to make any comments, but you will also have opportunity to hear or to say some words in reference to the zoning request that comes up later on in the, in the agenda.
All right, thank you. Um, good evening, everyone. Um, I'm here today to support the family and friends who have lost a loved one on Fielder Road. I've lived off Fielder Road for over 30 years, and I can remember seeing plenty of accidents and plenty of people driving way too fast for a residential road. Amara Carmouchet lost her life due to someone driving over 75 miles an hour on a 35 mile an hour road. Not, let alone he was intoxicated as well. But let's say even if he wasn't drunk, he was going way too fast for the conditions of that road. If you look at the, the location where the accident for Amara and for Cordero Esquie, who is another person who lost his life, um, if you look at the accident where that, where it occurred, you can tell that guardrails could potentially have slowed cars down. If they had hit the guardrails, they would have slowed the car down. Um, road strips could possibly slow cars down. Speed detection devices on both sides of the road could potentially help a driver slow down. I know, I know that because they cause me to use caution. If I see the, the speed limit blinking and it's telling me I'm going over the speed limit, it does cause me to slow down. Um, I would guess to say that most, most, to most people, the Fielder Road project doesn't really mean that much to them, because they have not been directly affected by this. But those of us in this room who have greatly had our lives affected by this, it has changed our course of life, and our lives will forever be changed. Amara was a special young woman to her family and friends. She was very talented, courageous, smart, and unique. Her friends miss her tremendously. I am a mother of one of her friends, and he misses her. She added so much to their crew, which we like to call them. I can't imagine her mother's pain. And quite honestly, I don't think anyone else here could unless they've lost a child themselves, especially due to unsafe measures on the road, people driving way too fast. We are asking that something please be done to try and slow down the drivers. I speak to, for her other friends, and I talk to them as much as I can, and it affects their life a lot. Thank you for taking the time to hear our voices today. My voice is for Amara, her mother, her brother, her sister, her other family members, and her friends, because we do miss her very much.
What's the cross street where that accident occurred at, on Fielder Road?
Um, I don't think there's a cross street.
What, what's the nearest street to it?
Preston, yes.
Preston?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's just within District 1.
Okay. And I, I just would like to say, is my time up?
Yeah, uh, yes, your time is up.
Okay.
Uh, but I'm taking it that everybody with the sunflower on is in support of you being here and your comments.
Amara Carmouchet and Cordero Esquie, yes, sir.
Duly noted, thank you, ma'am.
And Ms. Orley, what we have done...
Ms. Orley?
Ms. Orley? And, um, what we have done is, on the other side of Mount Zion, uh, for Fielder Road, we have began to research, um, the advent of putting sidewalks in over there to begin to protect, uh, the pedestrians and the citizens. We have, we've also put, we've, I've contacted the captain, sector captain over there, and they've begun to put some speed limits on, not speed limit, but speed detection devices up to begin to look at as well.
We have one. But it would help if there was a none, one going in both directions. It's only in one direction.
Yes, so we are looking at that very, very seriously. But the advent of sidewalks, in my estimation, is going to help that greatly, and we're going to pursue that.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I also like to mention, um, Mr. Matarko and Captain Hill, um, District 1 Sector Captain, as well as Chief Roberts, um, they are continually in contact, um, with the group, you know, concern about the Fielder Road. So I, I know a lot of times these things, we're handling, you know, in our district, and you may not know about it. So just to let you know, they are in contact constantly and working on this situation. As a matter of fact, Captain Hill was the one that helped facilitate getting those, um, signals back out there and so forth. So they're, you know, they're all doing and kind of working within, you know, their ability.
Yeah, and just to add to that, a matter of fact, on yesterday, I was at the church at, uh, Fielder in Rock Hill. And when I was coming out, uh, there was a police officer sitting in the driveway observing traffic. And I asked what was going on. He said that they're providing higher visibility in hopes of starting to slow down some of this traffic. So I say that to say that the police department hears you, and they actually are trying to, uh, come up with some ways to slow that traffic down. So again, thank you, uh, for being here. Mickey Garber.
Mr. Chairman, may I take my mask?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, Mickey Garber, unincorporated, Rex, Georgia. Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners, the topic of my discussion today is the Ethics Board, Governance, and the Governed. The Ethics Board should not have to go through the Board of Commissioners to see what cases would be heard. This would be a case of the fox guarding the in-house. The Ethics Board members have worked very hard with diligence and with integrity to bring justice to both the plaintiff and the defendant. To have the Ethics Board cases screened by the Board of Commissioners would be a disgrace and an affront to our democracy and would be bordering on totalitarianism. If the Ethics Board is reduced to just puppets, it would not surprise me if they all resigned in disgust. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Good afternoon, Chair. Commissioner Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated, Clayton County, and a current resident of District 3. I am here to espouse and, uh, espound on the fact of the big momentum that we turned jaws to blue. I, uh, coordinated a meeting yesterday at Divine Faith Ministries in conjunction with all three entities of the Clayton County Ministers Association. And one of our biggest concerns, that the topics was something that happened earlier in this meeting, the grandstanding and the disrespect. Now we are being viewed all over the world. We have the ability with work sessions, we have the ability with cell phones, emails, to get rid of the conflict before it comes before this public and the world. I'm so frustrated with the grandstanding, the unnecessary articulation of nonsense that drags the meetings on and on and on. So the world is watching us. John Ossoff will be here Thursday from 47 at Divine Faith Ministries for a campaign sign pickup. We, uh, we have in Warnock and Ossoff here prior to early voting. All elected officials are servants of the people. We need to focus on Clayton County to move this county forward in the spirit of excellence. On behalf of Bishop Donald Battle, we are going to have sit-down lunches with all elected officials once a month to collaborate together, to get on one accord, to move this county forward. Now with that stated, I am disappointed in the results that we got from the CARES Act funding on the first go-round. Fulton County got, by default, 140 million, we got 12.3. I have personally assembled about seven, eight grant writers privately, ready to partner with the county in reference to the Ministers Association getting some funding, because they have been forced to close up, and they have not gotten any funding, even though they're nonprofit. Now, we have to take advantage of our status in this community. We have 300,000 citizens. Thirty percent of them live under the poverty level. We are Tier 1 county. We need to put together a brainstorming team to ask for our own money, and my vision says 300 million. It's time for us to move forward. That's my daddy voice, my preacher voice, I apologize. But at the end of the day, we have got to collectively come together and collaborate together to move this county forward in the spirit of excellence, and let's stop the grandstanding. Thank you.
Thank you. Laquid, uh, okay, I'm having problems with this. Laquida Howard, it looks like?
Lakeia.
Lakeia, okay.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Lakeia Howard. I'm here on behalf of the Fielder Road Project and in honor of my brother-in-law, Caderro Ricardo Esquie. Um, 19, 32, and 290. 19 is the age of Amara Carmouchet. 32 is the age of Caderro Ricardo Esquie. 290 is the amount of accidents that have happened between Mount Zion and Highway 42 on Fielder Road. Highway Forty-two on Field of Road in less than three years. Imara and Caderro were killed within ninety days of each other and nothing still has not been done to save the next life. Today we come together to bring you the facts that remain. County reps know this information, do nothing, that's insane. We, the grieving families, should not have to come here and put up this fight when Clayton County reps can simply do what's right. I thought that Ca- Clayton County reps were more business mature. All personnel should remember, your Clayton County seat is never secure. If you want to apologize, envision your own victim's case. Think of your family's scorned souls left behind, then apologize with grace. Remember our names, all the facts we're going to present. Caderro, Imara, the Field of Road victims, what their lives represent. The Field of Road Project is for all of our own good. We need another radar sign, traffic lights, and a permanent policing patrol and we will not back down nor stop until this is understood. Today, when I leave this podium, Commissioners, remember these community claims and then what remains. Caderro Askew and Imara Camarche's names will not just die in Clayton County vain. All work together, let's save lives. I want to thank anybody who came and supported the Field of Road Project.
Who is the contact or the point person for this project? I'm sorry, who's the point person for the project?
Myself, Ms. Howard, and Ms. Anderson, Imara's mom.
Okay, could you make sure you leave your information, contact information?
I shall, no worries.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Oscar Castillo.
Good evening, good evening. I was just coming in behalf of the-
State your name and your county residence.
My name is Oscar Castillo. I lived in Rex, Georgia for twelve years. And, um, I'm coming in to support the families that come in, uh, to see what we can do better in Field of Road because I live in Field of Road and it's hard to get in and get out of my house because the people go so fast on that road. And a couple of years ago, a drunk driver, he coming so fast that I don't know how he missed the tree, but he tangled a car in front of my jar that I had parked in my jar in my, in my driveway and it's, the car was total loss because the speed and they, they, the speed they go in and, and Field of Road. So, in, in behalf of all the families, they lose their relatives and the loved ones, I tried to get this, uh, to the committee and, uh, everybody right here to help us out right there in Field of Road because we need action right there. We don't need no lights, we need more patrol officers in, in the street and, um, and try to help us out to everybody right there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Lindetta Hurd, Lindetta Hurd, how are we doing on time, Madam Clerk?
You had about twenty-three minutes.
How many?
I mean, you had twenty-three minutes.
Twenty-three minutes?
Come on, didn't speak the total of three minutes. That's not what you have left.
Okay, I was about to say, I, I know I was misreading that. Okay, yes, sir.
Good afternoon.
State your name for me, your name.
My name is Lindetta Hurd and I will be speaking in reference to Caderro Askew.
What county are you from, ma'am?
Clayton.
Okay.
My name is Evan Lovelady, I'm here in, um, behalf of Imara Camarche.
And now we want to do a moment of silence for them, so we ask you guys to participate with us too.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Makabai, Makiba, all right, come on down, McBride.
Hello, my name is Makiba McCormick, I live on the inter- I live at, right off Field of Road on Brook Hollow Drive, so I deal with, um, that area very often. Um, I worked at Mount Zion High School, which is basically right down the street. I've lived in my location for over twenty years and in that time period, when I first moved there, it was, we would call it a speed trap. You would always see a cop on that road and it was, it made it so that people always were safe, they were always driving slowly down the road. In fact, the speed limit originally was forty miles an hour, when I moved on the road, it moved down to thirty-five miles an hour, but the, the police presence disappeared. And what ended up happening is the speeding got worse and worse and worse. Now, I did hear the Commissioners say that they did put a, um, a speed enforcement on one side, but it's on the wrong side. The side that they have it is not where we're seeing the accidents, the accidents are all happening on the other side and so we need one on the side that's closer to Mount Zion Road, um, as well. I'm not saying there aren't accidents near the Rock Creek area, but the other area, we are getting a ridiculous amount of accidents. So, having been there for twenty years, having raised my children there, having one more still who has not begun to drive yet, she's eleven, but I have a twenty-three-year-old and a twenty-year-old who have both almost been hit, riding bikes, almost been hit, um, walking back and forth to Mount Zion High School. It is a very, very dangerous road and, and it's not that, um, we don't know how to drive, it's that when it is slick and it is raining, um, people don't pay attention to their speed and when they get to that hill, that makes it even worse. And there are blind spots in the road on the side between Mount Zion and, um, and where I am at the intersection of Babbling Brook, there are blind spots, so you can go around the corner and you won't be able to see that there's another car. And cars tend to drift into the lane because they're going too fast. So, um, and also for those who do not know, I was the teacher of Imara Camarche. So this is extremely important to me because I lost one of my babies because of this road. So, if you can, please take it into your consideration to add something.
Yeah, we're definitely going to, uh, address those concerns and we will be definitely in touch with the, uh, members of the Coalition to let you know that, what we are doing to try to mitigate this. That concludes public comment.
No, Mr. Chairman, hold on one second. Um, I do honestly apologize for the loss of life, this is Commissioner Felicia Franklin-Warner. I know this is not the district and I know in the past, people have, uh, considered to be, um, I guess some type of authority over a district, but as a parent that drives that route, I actually sent over to our, uh, Chairman as well as to our COO some time ago to have this route evaluated, I have emails of it and I even had to push to have a light put between Mount Zion and Stillwell. So, I am really trying my best to hold it because this should not have happened because at the end of the day, we need to be proactive and not reactive and this particular route on Field of Road, I have sent it over numerous of times, asking us to move it up on our sidewalk, um, implementation plan, but at the end of the day, when you're the one that is trying to bring it forth, sometimes you are out there on your own. So I am so sorry for this, but I am hoping that this county can be able to move forward quickly and hold folks accountable to make sure that we have everything that we need in place to keep our people safe. It's not grandstanding, I never address anything, but it's not grandstanding, we are talking about the safety of our citizens at the end of the day.
First of all, let me say, I'm, I'm definitely sorry for your loss and I have worked diligently within my district, District Four, to begin to, and I have done this since I've been in office, is bring sidewalks to this area, begin to resurface these roads in that area and we're going to continue to do so, do for it. You all, please, please, keep coming out. Deal with your Commissioners in the districts because we are the ones that are going to try to get this done. We have, I've spoken to the Chairman about sidewalks in that area, so I'm not concerned with what any other Commissioner wants to come in our district and say. I know what we're trying to do and we're going to get you all whole as much as we can and try to keep those that are small and growing up on that area safe because we have too many pedestrian deaths in this county all over.
And to, in that same vein, there, you know, there's definitely not an excuse, but there are state regulations that must be abided by, uh, as you're coming up with a strategic plan to address any roadway issue. Uh, we are looking into that, we have been looking into it. Uh, sometimes the answer is simply have more police visibility in that area. Uh, but when you talk about, and I've heard several of you say that there's drunk drivers that have came through. If you have a traffic light, if you have a, uh, sign that flashes, that's not going to stop them. If they're drunk and they're speeding, hold on ma'am, hold on ma'am, if there's drunk and they're speeding, then, you know, it, it, it's unfortunately, it's going to end tragically. But, I'm just saying, ma'am, I'm just saying that that is, uh, a possibility. But when we start to enforce and show more visibility and make sure that we do everything that we can do, uh, because the police officer is the one who stops and catch people, not a, a flashing speed sign. But it does help for those, we're not going to have any outbreaks, ma'am. Again, I, I'm just making a statement, if you'd like to wait till after the meeting and speak to me, I'll speak to you briefly. Uh, I don't have a problem with talking to you, but I'm just saying, I want to make sure that the expectations are reasonable in terms of what actually can be done, but when it comes to personnel, when it comes to putting up the speed detection signs, we hear you, we're definitely going to make that happen. Uh, some of the other things might, there might be some roadway stipulations or state stipulations that might slow the process, but that does not mean we're not going to ask, that does not mean that we're not going to do everything in our ability to make that happen. But between the citizens, the police, and the county governance, we can make something happen, we can make a change some kind of way and that's what I'm hearing that everybody wants and that's exactly what we're going to strive for. No, ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, if you're going to cut them off then, sir, I, I, I'm going to say-
Ma'am, you, see, you, you are out of order because you have to be recognized, so please, please be mindful and follow-
Responsibility has nothing to do with the loss of a life.
Commissioner Warner, you are out of order. You're out of order.
Respect the district.
Sir, I'm not out of order, I'm elected and I can speak my opinion, the problem is, if I say anything-
Ma'am, you're going to respect the Chairman's seat. You're not the Chairman yet, so please, you're out of order, we're going to proceed on with the meeting and we will talk to those who are, uh, concerned about this matter in further detail and length. Madam Clerk, proceed on.
Mr. Chair, before you move on, may I suggest you also, um, which I know you will, you're going to talk to Mr. Matarco as well as Attorney Reed because again, you know, they both, um, have been, you know, somewhat involved in this situation, we know, uh, Mr. Matarco is our expert on roads and so forth and so he would, you know, know exactly, so I, I appreciate it and thank you so much.
Yeah, he and I have had those conversations in this area and other areas as well, but let's please, let's please, let's move on.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair?
Any questions on any other items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous?
The next item is item number, we just pulled it off the agenda.
Item's here, then we pulled two off, I think.
Two thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Two thirty-one.
Twenty twenty-two thirty-one, I'm sorry, number seventeen, resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a contract with Georgia Power Company for the installation and lease of the outdoor lighting LED system at the Clayton County Board of Health rear parking lot.
Mr. Reed?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Board of Resolution Twenty Twenty-two Thirty-One, resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a contract with the Georgia Power Company for the installation and lease of outdoor lighting LED system at the Clayton County Board of Health rear parking lot to authorize the Chairman to execute the contract and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget as necessary to reflect appropriate revenue source and expense to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment, can I have a comment before the motion, please?
Uh, no, ma'am, uh, comments should be made during the-
Okay, I can wait, I can wait.
Is there a motion to approve?
So move the stake of the question.
Second, all right, is there any comments?
Uh, yes, sir, this is Hambrick, um, yes, my comment and is regarding that light, I know we discussed during the work session, lights and all, and I don't recall this one or I missed out on this one, but my question is, um, as far as who's paying for the lights? And, and I think what I read is it's six hundred fifty dollars a month for that light that will, uh, come to the, uh, Board of Commissioners, is that the general fund or?
That was it, where's Mr. Matarco at? Mr. Matarco?
Okay, well, let me ask you, well, since, it sounds like it's going to be, uh, with the Board of Commissioners, it, I thought it was customary that whoever owns the building is responsible for those bills and in this case, well, I know the state didn't own it, but those are state employees or whatever, but that building is owned by someone else, it's not owned by the county.
Is that correct?
That, that's correct, um, the building is owned by the, uh, Urban Redevelopment Agency, which is also the, um, Development Authority.
So do we have to, do we have to eat that bill or can they take that responsibility?
I believe it is certainly would be, uh, an appropriate ask for them to pay the cost of, uh, of, uh, of paying for the lease with Georgia Power.
Okay, but what, what is this, what's the resolution, I ask?
It's just for the proposal to install. It's just a proposal to install.
Yeah, so will we have to have a separate, uh, MOU with the Development Authority for payment on that?
That's correct.
So, there's a need to install the light and that's all that this resolution here is doing, is giving them the go-ahead to do so.
Well, it also would allow us to, uh, actually enter into that agreement with Georgia Power. The downside, obviously, if the, if the Development Authority says, no, we're not going to pay for it, the contract right now, a- as this is presented, would be between the county and the Develop- and the, uh, Georgia Power.
And the reason why it comes before us is because we are the governing authority and the Development Authority cannot enter into a contract with Georgia Power.
They could enter into a contract because they have contracting authority, uh, the Development Authority could enter into a contract with them.
So why did it go before them, to Commissioner's point?
That I don't know, uh, it was presented, Georgia Power presented it to the county to, um, to, to do it and you could, um, enter into this agreement and then ask the Development Authority to pay the county back for it, or it could be presented to the Development Authority on its own to make that improvement.
I would like to see us present it to the, uh, Development Authority first.
Well, we have a motion on, on the, on the floor, so unless it, so if it's, if it's, uh, denied, then it would naturally go back to them, well, it could go to them.
Right, I mean, y- you could, if this motion, uh, to approve it failed, uh, before it came back, the, um, somebody, uh, either Ben or Je- or Jeff, I'm not sure who put this on, I think it was, um, well, it looks like Central Services, anyway, somebody could reach out to the, to the Development Authority and ask for them to, um, to get it approved under their budget.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Those opposed, aye. Did I get anything from anybody else?
Uh, yes, I oppose. Hambrick opposes.
Oppose, I'm sorry, I was-
Oppose, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Commissioner Warner?
She dropped off.
Okay, she's no longer on the call, I mean, no longer in the meeting, all right? Uh, so, so the motion fails, the motion fails. Next.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, ma'am. I thought we had two that we took off.
No, the other one failed.
That's right, that's right, that's right, thank you.
The next item is Board Appointment for the Library Board.
All right, first Board Appointment is to the Library Board. Ms. Olakimbo resigned from the Library Board on October twenty-second, twenty twenty. New Board Member will, term will begin immediately and will expire July, June thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. This is my selection. So I would like to offer up Julie Pizarro of Jonesboro. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous?
Who made the second?
Hambrick.
Hambrick, Commissioner Hambrick. All right, next Board Appointment is to the Land Bank. Is that large, point of clarification here of, I guess, Madam Clerk, we're just looking to appoint one person at this time, or, because you may mention about four, so the other three are already filled.
The other three are already there, so you need one more.
One more to complete. All right, according to Resolution twenty twenty-two oh two, Clayton County Board of Commissioners now has four appointments to the Land Bank. All of these appointments are at large, this new appointment will begin immediately and will expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Anyone have a recommendation?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, I have a question, because when I was inquiring about this, can this be a citizen, or does it have to be someone from the municipality?
No, these are our selections. The municipalities have already appointed their members.
Oh, okay. Well, I would, I would like to appoint one of my constituents, Mr. Gregory Washington.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Probably moved and second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Thank you.
The next item will be public hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, speakers are expected to immediately cease speaking and leave the podium. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants and zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Occupants of a zoning decision item shall have no, opponents, I'm sorry, of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin stating your name, address, or the name of your, any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Reed. The first item before you is Resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-two. This is actually not a zoning matter, but this is part of the requirement to abandon a public road, so there is a public hearing requirement for this. So this is resolution authorizing Clayton County to abandon approximately twenty-two thousand nine hundred eighty square foot, feet, point zero five three acres of right-of-way for the closed portion of Old Flatshows Road. To authorize the chairman to execute any documents really interior to and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Okay, so this is a public hearing.
That's correct. It's been properly advertised, if anyone wants to speak for or against it, they can come in.
So at this time, does anybody want to speak in favor of this request? Anybody want to speak in favor of it? Anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition to? All right. Do we, we need to move forward with vote, right? Commissioner Hambrick? Commissioner Hambrick?
I missed that, I'm sorry, yes.
How would you like to proceed on this?
Oh, oh, okay, so we don't have to have one, two, three hearings? This is it?
We just did.
Oh, oh, okay. Well, I moved that we approved Resolution twenty twenty-two thirty-two.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
The next item is item D, B O C two zero zero three dash zero zero forty-five. It's a rezoning, request to rezone R S one eighty to P U D from Community Development.
Ms. Ma'am.
Agenda item B O C two zero zero three dash zero zero four five, a rezoning. The applicant Battle Law P C on the behalf of Blackstone Investment Company is requesting to rezone twenty-five acres plus a minor acres of land from R S one eighty, single-family residential, to P U D, planned unit development, for a proposed new one-hundred-unit, single-family attached townhome community to rename the towns at Flatshows. The subject property is located at eighteen twenty-one Creel Drive, has furnished on the north side of Creel Drive, near the intersection of West Fayetteville Road, just east of the Castle Gate subdivision and Flatshows Park. The applicant, the staff recommendation is for approval conditional. The zoning advisory group recommendation was for, was for approval conditional. However, this case was a table item on the B O C agenda. The applicant has submitted a request, request for an additional table to hold this case until December fifteenth. The applicant has submitted this request in writing, and that has been handed off to the clerk, and we do have an acknowledgement if you need to have the applicant to speak.
Yes, Ms. Battle, I see you're online, so please proceed forward, if anything you have to add.
Good evening, everyone, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, One Westport Square, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three zero. We have been working diligently to respond to the questions and issues by Commissioner Hambrick, along with members of the community. As a result, we are seeking to specifically address access as well as stormwater issues, which will take us a few more weeks to complete. So we are respectfully requesting that this matter be deferred to the December hearing agenda, which will give us an opportunity to complete our work, meet with the Commissioner, as well as community members, and hopefully be able to address the concerns that have been raised. Thank you.
So you're asking for this item to be tabled?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Uh, yes, I accept the applicant's request to table through December fifteenth, twenty twenty.
Is there a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
All right, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous. Next, thank you, Ms. Battle.
The next item is item E, which is L S two zero zero six dash zero zero nine preliminary plat, requesting a new one-hundred-and-twenty-one-unit, single-family attached townhouse unit, Community Development.
The subject request is a related case, L S two zero zero six zero zero nine. This request is for the preliminary plat. The applicant Battle Law P C on the behalf of Blackstone Investment Company is requesting a new, the, the number of units has been revised from one-hundred-and-twenty-one units down to one-hundred units of single-family attached townhomes on the twenty-five plus or minus acres. Again, the property is on R S one eighty, single-family residential. The rezoning to the P U D will allow the property to seek the preliminary plat for the one-hundred-unit townhome development. The recommendation, again, from the staff and ZAG is for approval with conditions. However, again, this was a table item, and it accompanies the request Ms. Battle just stated, and she's asked, requesting additional tabling to December fifteenth.
Ms. Battle?
Um, so, Michelle Battle with Battle Law, One Westport Square, Decatur, Georgia, three zero zero three zero. We are similarly requesting the tabling into the December fifteenth hearing. Thank you.
Commissioner Hambrick?
Uh, yes, I would like to accept the applicant's request to table the item to, until December fifteenth, twenty twenty.
All right, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Gregory, second motion, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous. Thank you.
The next item is item F, which is L S two zero zero eight dash zero zero fourteen, Village of Ellenwood, P H three dash forty-two, Single Family Lots, Community Development.
Agenda case number L S two zero zero eight zero zero one four. The applicant Sunrise Builders, Inc. is requesting to certify the property located near the fork of Villagewood Lane and Village Park Drive. The parcel consists of fourteen plus or minor acres. The request is for a preliminary plat on property that's currently zoned P U D as part of the villages of Ellenwood. The applicant proposes forty-two single-family lots.
Mr. Chairman, the applicant has asked that we hold this until December? Ms. Battle?
Is she?
Yes, we do have on record, we did, Commissioner Gregory, we did receive from the applicant a request to, to table this, this request also to December the fifteenth. And I'll just state that, just for the record, that the case was previously tabled by B O C, but the recommendation on the table from staff was approval with conditions, and ZAG was for denial. And again, this is a request by Ms. Battle to table for an additional thirty days to December fifteenth.
Ms. Battle?
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry, yes, we are requesting to table this matter until December. I was just retained on this matter and would like the opportunity to try and work with Commissioner to discuss what the issues are with the application.
Okay, Commissioner Gregory?
Uh, yes, sir, I offer a motion to accept the deferment until December.
December fifteenth?
Yes, December fifteenth, I'm sorry.
Okay. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous.
The next item is item G, B O C dash two zero zero nine dash zero zero six zero, Jamaica Roberts Event Facility, Community Development.
Yes, the request, case number B O C two zero zero nine zero zero six one, the applicant Jamaica Roberts is requesting a conditional use permit for property located at six seven 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 Mount Zion Boulevard. The property is located on one-point-seven-four acres of land, currently zoned general business. The applicant seeks to operate a special event facility within a, a single suite within the, the small shopping plaza on the, on the property. Staff recommendations for approval, and ZAG recommendations for approval, with one condition, the one condition is that the space be granted a conditional use permit for the applicant Jamaica Roberts, and it only be for that particular suite.
All right, are you the applicant, ma'am? Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Jamaica Roberts, Clayton County resident, right now, fifty-eight forty-four Meadow Lane, Rex, Georgia. Like they said, I'm asking for a conditional use permit for my facility. Like I stated before, I already signed the lease with, I already signed the lease with them for three years, and I've said before, I had made a mistake of not doing my due diligence as a new business owner and checking out the zoning beforehand. The landlord told me that it would be okay to be used for an event facility. So come to find out, it wasn't. So now that's why I'm asking now for a conditional use permit to use this facility for.
Okay. Uh, how many minutes would you like to use or have reserved in rebuttal, so that somebody want to oppose you? Usually about two minutes or so.
Okay.
All right. All right, so this is a public hearing. Is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of the applicant's request? You can have a seat right now. Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition of the applicant's request? Anybody in opposition? Commissioner Gregory?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna have to offer a motion to deny this petition.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Properly moved and second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous. Your, your request failed, ma'am.
Am I able to speak back as to why?
No, the vote's been taken, ma'am. If you would like to speak back with that department, then talk to them, maybe they can come up with alternative plan for you. All right, next.
The next item is H, B O C two zero zero eight dash zero zero five nine, Suncap, modify existing conditions, Community Development.
Agenda item number B O C two zero zero eight zero zero five nine, the applicant Suncap Property Group on behalf of M C P Ellenwood L L C is requesting to modify existing zoning conditions to the property located at forty-three seventy-five Lunsford Drive. The parcel ID is identified on the agenda, the property is currently zoned P U D. The applicant proposes to expand the existing parking area to accommodate the FedEx facility that's located across Lunsford Drive. The recommendation from, from the staff is for, is for denial. The recommendation from the ZAG group is to accept the applicant's request to withdraw. The applicant has submitted in writing a request to withdraw this application.
Uh, whose district is this?
Me, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I offer a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal letter.
Hold on, just a second for me, Commissioner, who is, was it Henry Bailey, is that the applicant? Mr. Bailey, you have a comment? And is that, in fact, your intention is to withdraw?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Mr. Bailey?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry. If you can hear me, my, our request is to withdraw the application as I already stated.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm sorry, Commissioner Gregory, go ahead.
Okay, yes, sir, I offer a motion to accept the applicant's withdrawal of this petition.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Davis, second to motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous.
The next item is item I, B O C dash two zero zero six dash zero zero five four, Medical Center, Rezone G B to M C D, Community Development.
Agenda item B O C two zero zero six zero zero five four, the applicant Chris Cannon on the behalf of Frank R Saviti is requesting a rezoning from General Business District to M C D Medical Center District for a medical facility to use it as a proposed blood bank. The property is six-point-zero-five acres in size, is located at ninety-four Upper Riverdale Road. The parcel ID is identified on the agenda. The applicant has submitted a letter stating his request to withdraw the application. The planning staff and zoning advisory group accepted the application, the applicant's request to withdraw.
This applicant online.
We received this correspondence in writing, I don't think this applicant is available tonight.
Okay, you do have it in writing, though.
Yes, we do have this in writing.
All right. Commissioner Hambrick?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I would like to accept the applicant's withdrawal request.
Is there a second?
A second.
Properly moved and second, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that is the agenda.
Mr. Reed?
Uh, yes, we need an executive session on personnel and real estate.
All right, is there a motion going to executive session for personnel and real estate? I'll make the motion.
Oh, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved and second. Commissioner Warner made the motion, Commissioner Davis seconded the motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Issue unanimous. All right, Commissioner Gregory?
I'm sorry, here, I'm sorry, okay.
Commissioner Hambrick? Commissioner Hambrick?
Here.
Commissioner Warner?
I'm here.
Commissioner Davis?
Present.
All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second the motion, those in favor, aye.
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 Opposed? Issue unanimous. Uh, Ms. Uh, Ms. Ambles?
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, on behalf of Transportation and Development, Human Resources is requesting to hire Mika Ladouxx, L A D O U X, as civil engineer two, at grade twenty-six, step six, total compensation is eighty-one thousand one hundred and sixty dollars, instead of grade twenty-six three, which is the starting salary, with the total compensation of seventy-eight thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars. The cost of this request is two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars, however, Transportation and Development's budget is able to absorb the cost.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, is it, do we normally announce the name? I thought the board only has to approve the change in the salary, and then the director hires the person, has that changed?
We are referring to one, and good, good evening, Commissioner Warner, we are, uh, referring to one particular employee rather than the actual classification, so it's important to get the employee's name on record in case there is any type of issue that comes up later, but if we were making this, uh, change just for the classification itself, then that would be different.
And that was based on...
I'm a little lost at that.
That's basically...
But I mean, I'm ready to vote, 'cause I'm a little lost, 'cause they're gonna be working for Transportation and Development, so then budgetary items have to come before the board, are we creating a position or just impacting the budget to be different than what's already approved?
No, ma'am, and this has civil service implications, Civil Service Rule five dot two oh one, uh, applies in this instance, normally, we would hire employees at the starting salary, but due to some circumstances, such as if the position is hard to fill, if the position requires a specialized skill, then the director, um, will, uh, approach Human Resources with the issue, Civil Service Rule five dot two oh one allows that, and I have to bring it before the Board of Commissioners for you all's consideration and approval, but that's, we, this is, we, this is, uh, not anything new, we have done this before, and we do say specifically who the request is for, like I said, if there's an issue that comes up later, we have it on the record that we made this request specifically for this employee.
Okay, I'm clear.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, y'all, I come from, um, private, not public sector, so, anyway.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No to the, um, the salary, not the person.
All right, uh, four one, it passes with, uh, Commissioner Warner, uh, opposing. All right, a motion to go out of, uh, not to go out, to adjourn, motion to adjourn. So moved.
Mr. Chair?
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Davis seconded the motion, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Issue unanimous, everybody have a good night.